Okay, good morning, everybody. I'd like to call to order the budget workshop for the Farmington Board of Education for February 2nd, 2019. If we could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public schools, so I'd just like to thank everybody for their efforts. It's truly greatly appreciated. We will go through today from a process perspective, essentially line by line, looking at the details of the budget and information will be presented to us. We can field questions as we go through, present them to Kathy, Vince, and the administrators. Today's goal is to tentatively approve the budget as presented. For then, additional feedback for Monday night's meeting, we have meetings scheduled for Monday, tentatively Tuesday and Wednesday, after which questions that are presented to Kathy will, you know, in the next 48 hours, her and Vince and the team will hopefully be able to respond to any questions or thoughts we have, present those to us on Monday, and hopefully we can tentatively, or finally approve the budget on Monday, to the extent there's additional needs or wants relative to the budget, there's additional meetings scheduled in a tentative basis, but we will hopefully have everything wrapped up by Monday night. So with that being said, I will turn the tables over to Kathy for the starting of our budget process.
I'm pleased to present the Board of Education's budget, the 2019-2020 school year budget, to the Board of Education and community. The 2019-2020 budget was developed to address the Board of Education's mission and improvement design within the budget guidelines, policies of the Board, and the state and federal requirements. It is important to note that throughout the budget development process, zero-based budgeting was implemented. So the presentation is in three sections. The first section, I'm going to go over our improvement design, which is really the foundation of our strategic improvement and budget development process. Our improvement design provides clarity in our expectations and vision, which help create a very focused, fiscally responsible budget aligned to our strategic priorities. The second area of the presentation will highlight our favorable rankings and expenditures and the reductions made to this budget throughout the budget development process. And the third section will be about the budget drivers, and there are clear budget drivers in this particular budget. Farmington's compelling mission is outlined on this slide. Our mission directly aligns to our improvement design, creating a through-line from our mission and strategic priorities to all classrooms, all students, and all schools. This visual represents our strategic improvement design. It's, again, serves as the foundation of our budget development, so when we look at this slide, the what is our vision of the graduate, which was developed in Farmington after a community engagement process in 2010. And Farmington led the way in Connecticut and really on a national level, because school districts are just now developing their own vision of the graduate, so we're very proud to have been at the forefront of that work. The how is our framework for teaching and learning, and that's our instructional delivery model. It was created by Farmington teachers and administrators, and it aligns to what research states how students learn best. The why, our core beliefs articulate how we interact with one another each day and how we approach our work with students. The direction is our theory of action. It's a series of if-then statements that provide a clear direction for the next level of work for all members of our school district. In the next few slides, I'll just briefly review each element of our improvement design, and as I said earlier, the improvement design is really the foundation of our budget development process. Farmington's vision of the graduate, the what, outlines the core body of knowledge and transferable thinking and learning skills all Farmington students master upon graduation. Improvement efforts, including curriculum, instruction, assessment, and programming, are all aligned to our vision of the graduate, beginning in kindergarten and throughout all grade levels. And as a result, Farmington, again, remains at the forefront of innovation in teaching, learning, student outcomes, and students as leaders of their own learning at the local, state, and national levels. This slide just shows our students actively engaged in purpose-driven, self-directed, mastery-based, and socially constructed learning experience that all align to our vision of the graduate. This is a list of our core beliefs. We consider this the why, expectations, effort, equity, instruction, relationships, and results matter in Farmington. The framework for teaching and learning is our instructional framework, and it is considered how we implement our vision of the graduate. It ensures that we are delivering instruction that is directly aligned to our vision of the graduate each day. This is our theory of action, and we consider this our direction. The what, how, and why provides clarity in our improvement efforts, and it's resulted in impressive shifts in teaching, learning, and assessment, as well as programming and outstanding outcomes. Our theory of action provides a clear and compelling direction for improvement work that supports and integrates the what, how, and why throughout the school district. So the first area is purpose-driven learning. It is designed to foster student intellectual curiosity and meaningful work that has purpose and significance to the learner, so that students develop an ethic of excellence and experience the joy of contributing to a greater good. Socially constructed learning creates an environment that values diverse perspectives, where students, local and global experts, mentors, and peers are engaged in the context of inquiry, discovery, and exploration. Mastery-based learning ensures curriculum and assessment are organized around essential learning targets, varied ways of demonstrating mastery, and flexible pacing. It elevates student agency and ownership, so that students are not passive participants in their learning, but active, highly engaged learners. Self-directed learning promotes academic risk-taking, reflection, persistence, and resilience to increase independence and inspires students to direct their own personal and collective learning. So all elements of our theory of action assist us in the budget process. Our improvement design is visionary, and the clarity of our strategic priorities not only ensures these priorities are implemented at the classroom level, but are also budgeted for within our annual budget development process. The superintendent's recommended budget reflects a total budget amount of $67,785,605, with an increase of $1,985,707, or a 3.02 percent increase over the 2018-2019 school district This is a different view of our 3.02 percent increase. Salaries, 1.29 percent of the 3.02 increase, and it reflects collaborative employee board negotiations within all associations in the area of salaries. 1.18 percent of the 3.02 increase reflects health insurance claim trends that necessitate an increase in health insurance funding for the coming budget year. 0.54 percent of the 3.02 percent increase reflects all other increases in the remaining accounts, and it is primarily driven by the renewal of our transportation contract and the needs in special education services. The recommended budget maintains core programming, K-12, aligned to Farmington's improvement design and strategic priorities by advancing academic excellence and equity through innovative programming, K-12, supporting students' academic and social-emotional development, providing flexible pathways for challenge and support, promoting comprehensive, research-based, and highly effective staff and faculty development, increasing safety and security measures in schools and in the area of transportation, containing costs through zero-based budgeting and efficiencies to maintain current programming, and maintaining class size levels in accordance with Board of Education policy. We have much to be proud of in Farmington. We continue to be highlighted at the regional, state, and national levels for excellence in teaching and learning and student outcomes. I'll just highlight a few items. I'm not going to go over the entire slide. So Farmington sophomores once again outperformed a national cohort of seniors on the college work readiness assessment. This assessment aligns directly to our vision of the graduate and our students' impressive outcomes are a reflection of our Board's and community's commitment to all students acquiring not only a body of knowledge, but those transferable thinking and learning skills that are most valued in college work and life. Our students and faculty continue to be recognized at the state and national levels for many, for their many varied accomplishments. Other impressive recognitions and accomplishments are as follows. We were first place in the entrepreneurship challenge. Our economics team earned first place in the annual Harvard pre-collegiate economic challenge. And the Voice, Farmington High School Student Newspaper recently was awarded a gold medal for excellence in student media. FHS Theater Productions received 12 Halo Award nominations and won the category of Best Dynamic Duo in a Play. These are just a few of the notable highlights. Please refer to our achievements PowerPoint and our annual results and outcomes booklet, which is online, for detailed accomplishments through the community's investment in our schools. Farmington schools and students continue to lead the way. Here are examples of our favorable state rankings, and this is when I'm transitioning to the second part of the presentation, which is our favorable state rankings and budget efficiencies to contain costs. There is a relationship between the accomplishment side and this slide, excellence in education and programming, as well as fiscal responsibility and management. These rankings are based on Connecticut's 169 towns, one spending the most, and 169 spending the least. Given our extraordinary outcomes coupled with our favorable expenditure rankings, here are some specific examples of how we focus each day on cost containment and avoidance while providing high-quality, a high-quality education for Farmington students. I'm just going to highlight a couple items on this slide, and you're going to see these in our budget. An update in security cameras, K-12, will result in an annual savings to the operating budget next year and in the future. And Farmington High School, I'm sorry, Farmington Public Schools was successfully awarded once again a security grant to support security-related improvements for over $300,000 in grant funding, and I am very proud of the strong commitment we have made to safety and security in our Here are some additional examples of cost containment measures. I'll highlight a couple of items. A new occupational therapy equipment collaborative between several school districts is resulting in cost savings for Farmington, and new internal and external lighting projects will continue to provide savings in electricity over time. Oops, I think I'm, one more, sorry. This slide provides examples of reductions totaling $500,000 that have occurred during the budget development process to arrive at this recommended budget levels for the 2019-2020 school year. This is now, I'm transitioning to the third section of this presentation, which will be the budget drivers. The first driver of the budget is salaries, and as you can see, it accounts for 66.93 percent of the total budget and reflects collaborative negotiations between various associations in the Board of Education. Each of the association's negotiated salary increases are listed on this slide. The salary series reflects a 1.91 percent increase over this year's budget. This slide and the next slide provide an overview of the professional staffing request for the 2019-2020 school year. Each year, we carefully study staffing levels to address needs and find efficiencies when possible. There is a request for an additional 2.6 FTE, as well as 2.0 teachers not deployed due to volatile enrollment. It is important to note that the 2.0 FTE teachers not deployed are within Board class-size In this area of academic excellence and equity, there are several staffing efficiencies that offset increases in FTE based on policy and student need, with increases in a 1.0 FTE for class size at West District and a .3 FTE for increased need for students requiring English language learning support across grade levels. The next slide, social-emotional learning increases in professional staffing, total 3.5 FTE. Descriptions of these increases are listed on the slide, and this aligns directly to increased need in social-emotional supports for students. .1 FTE in flexible pathways for challenge and support provides an additional course at FHS, which will result in a student-led writing tutorial program. Again, the total FTE increase in professional staffing is 2.6 FTEs plus a 2.0 FTE for class-size teachers not yet deployed. The total is 4.6 FTE increase in professional staffing, and you can see the areas of efficiency and savings in the last two slides due to our zero-based budgeting efforts. The non-certified staffing has a decrease of 1.86 FTE or two paraprofessionals. The second major budget driver is employee benefits. This account provides for 100 percent of expected paid claims and the administration of employee health insurance. Farmington's preventative care measures show best-in-class rates across almost all items. You can see the life and long-term disability costs in this slide as well. In the last few months, we have experienced higher claim costs. Given this emerging trend in higher claim costs, there is an increase in this account. The employee benefits series accounts for 15.56 percent of our total budget, and there is a 7.96 percent increase in this account. Health insurance trends are trending 10 to 12 percent, so even with our increase, we are slightly below health insurance claim trends, or cost trends. The services series includes varied items. This series accounts for 13.83 percent of the total budget. It reflects a 3.91 percent increase. This is an area of cost avoidance and containment through contract negotiations. It also reflects a commitment to providing excellent programming for students with special needs. The increase in this series is across several objects. Two examples of the increases in services are in transportation due to the newly negotiated contract, and special services contracted services based on student need. Here are some examples of cost avoidance and containment within the 300 series. All of these examples are a reflection of the hard work of our faculty, administration, and our Board of Education, as well as our partnership with the Town of Farmington. The 300 series includes major facility projects within the operating budget. And first, I will highlight the need to address the critical facility needs here at FHS, although this is not in the major facilities projects, and it wouldn't be in the operating budget for the comprehensive needs we have. We did include the recently approved FHS statement of need in the Board's capital budget that was sent to the Town of Farmington, as this is an urgent and critical facility need in Farmington. We hope to continue to work in collaboration with the town and community to address the comprehensive needs that are highlighted in the FHS statement of needs. In addition, we are continuing to implement the recommendations of our comprehensive 2018 K-8 facility assessment. We now have both short and long-term facility recommendations for our six other school facilities. The information in each of our K-8 facility assessment reports informs our annual capital budget, as well as our annual major facilities projects in the services series of the operating budget. In Farmington, our mission improvement design have been and continue to be clear, compelling, and reflect a tradition of leading the way in education, and now we have clear, a clear and comprehensive plan to improve and align our facilities to our mission and improvement The supplies series reflects a .5053 percent decrease, or a $10,003 decrease. The 400 series accounts for 2.75 of the total budget. This account provides for facilities used in swimming and ice hockey competitions, and for the purchase of a wide range of items such as instructional health, custodial computer, and testing supplies. This slide reflects the budget level for the equipment series, which accounts for .59 percent of the total budget. This series reflects equipment requests. There is a slight 2.36 percent, or $9,202, increase for equipment. This slide shows the progression over several years, including the upcoming school year of increasing technology access for all students to support student-centered teaching and learning aligned to the priorities outlined in our theory of action and our mission and improvement design. We should be very proud of our collective strategic planning in this area. Here are some examples of how the school district has focused on strategic cost allocation and excellence within programming in the equipment series. I'll highlight two items from this slide to illustrate our strategic approach. We reevaluated the need for virtualization, resulting in the adoption of new services that allowed a reallocation of funding, not an increase in funding, a reallocation of funding by approximately $25,000 in the operating and $50,000 in the capital budget. A continuous improvement of network topology and collaboration with CEN has leveraged federal E-Rate program, resulting in increased network security, which is very important, increased bandwidth, and added resiliency. The dues and fees series is the last series. It reflects a .35 percent of the total budget with a 2.87 percent, or $6,382, increase. This includes memberships to organizations and liability and property insurance. The next slide, this slide is an overview of the major budget drivers that reflect the 3.02 percent increase over the 2018-19 school district budget, all of which I reviewed within this presentation. I'm ending with our favorable rankings. The 2019-2020 budget supports all students to achieve academic and personal excellence, exhibit persistent effort, and live as resourceful, inquiring, and contributing global citizens. As I've said throughout the presentation, we are leading the way in excellence in teaching and learning, as well as student outcomes, achievements, and in the area of operation. Our financial plan supports and advances these efforts. We've taken a long-term, strategic, and highly effective approach to cost containment, avoidance, and savings, so that resources are aligned directly to our mission and improvement design at the student level. I'm proud that in Farmington, all members of our school district community, our students, our parents, our teachers, staff, administrators, Board of Education, and Town Council take ownership of learning, improvement, and excellence in achievement, as well as operations. We do provide a student-centered, self-directed, mastery-based, and purpose-driven education here in Farmington with a commitment to socially constructed learning. We take great pride in implementing our strategic improvement approach with an eye always on cost containment through collaborative negotiations, partnerships, ongoing reviews of programming, facilities, and staffing to realize efficiencies, knowing that it is essential to do so on behalf of our students and the taxpayers of Farmington, especially with uncertain financial support from grants and state-level funding. This is a collaborative endeavor with all members of our school district community, seeking out new and innovative approaches that will contain and reduce costs over time while ensuring excellence in all that we do. The clarity in our improvement design greatly assists in systems alignment, including resource allocation and the implementation of strategic improvement priorities by all members of our school district community. Our student, faculty, school, and district accomplishments, continuous improvement efforts, rigorous curriculum, and high-quality programming have contributed to a nationally-recognized education here in Farmington. The recommended 2019-2020 budget is responsive to our community and to our students. The next generation of pioneers, scholars, contributors, and citizens, they will one day lead the way, and each of us take great pride in knowing that we have contributed to their individual and collective success, and I look forward to presenting the budget in more detail to the Board of Education and community today. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And just, you know, for the record, at the end of Kathy's, a better, more inclusive slide with the town budget, the Town Council scheduling of the budget process is included at the end of that, so that, you know, for everybody's reference, give it sort of a timeline and schedule. So thank you very much, as always. Now we will move to the presentation of the budget, object by object. So we will start, start in the beginning, right? Is that the best place to start?
That's Kim's phrase.
So I guess at this point, if I can have a motion to tentatively approve Page 1, central office salaries in the amount of $544,480.
Motion. So this particular account provides for central office, superintendent of schools, assistant superintendent, and the business office salaries. There's a 2.41 percent increase, and that's the overview, yes.
Okay. At this point, are there any questions on Page 1 of the budget for Kathy? All right, the motion to tentatively approve Page 1, central office salaries in the amount of $544,480. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Absentions? Next item, if I can have a motion to tentatively approve Page 2, principals in the amount of $2,248,804.
So this is one of those elements, actually, the page before this page and the current page, where we have really extraordinary rankings when it comes to what we're spending on administration and educational leadership. So this particular line item is bringing together all of our principals, and the account reflects a slight increase in the FHS Dean of Students position from a .6 FTE to a .8. And there is a corresponding teacher turnover decrease in FHS math teachers, and this is to provide just a .2 additional administrative assistance at the high school with all the demands at that particular level. There is a need for that increase. And the 1920 FASA contract provides for a 2.25 contract increase for administrators.
Any questions for Kathy on Page 2?
Kathy, there was a comment made at our last meeting, a public comment about administrators and looking for potential cost savings. Can you kind of elaborate why? I mean, I mean, you said it in our statistics, we are one of the most frugal school districts in the state when it comes to administrators. Can you talk a bit more about how you manage that staff and why you're able to do it even at such a low staffing level?
So we do have very favorable rankings in this particular area. In general administration, out of 169 towns, we're 160. So, and one is spending the most, and 169 is spending the least, so we're one of the districts spending the least amount on general administration. And then we get to the school base, we're one- And then we get to the school base, we're 143rd. And it's surprising that a Farmington would have these rankings and have such excellence in leadership here, but we have always taken approach of a lean administration and trying to put all, you know, our resources and support at the student level. We do a lot of, you know, capacity building. You know, our elementary schools do not have assistant principals. In other places I've been, there have been administrators for every subject area, full-time central office administrators for every subject area. We have selected to just have one person overseeing every subject area, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. So, we are very fortunate that we have extraordinary administrators here who do a phenomenal job, but I will tell you that there are increased demands on the operations side, on the evaluation side, and we have not increased at all in administration, even though the mandates keep moving forward at the state level and are taking our administrators away from that core work of teaching and learning and, you know, in classrooms and the strategic improvement work. So, this slight increase at the high school is just acknowledging that those demands are significant, and we need a slight increase in that Dean of Students for evaluation, you know, teacher evaluation, staff evaluation, as well as other operational issues that we deal with each day up here at the high school.
Thanks, Kathy.
Any additional questions for Kathy with regard to Page 2? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve Page 2, principals in the amount of $2,248,804. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, next, can I have a motion to tentatively approve Page 5, teacher salaries in the amount of $31,881,871.
Motion. Second. So, this is the area where we budget all of our teacher salaries. There is a 1.5 GWI at the top step only in the contract and a step increase only for all other teachers. And I'll just go over one item. We've had some recent retirements, and so we're going to move, what is the amount that we're moving out, Ben?
Exact number? Amy just did the calculations for us. Since Kathy's budget, we've had a number of new teachers.
I actually have. Okay, so 71,700. We're going to move out of this line and we're placing, we're going to transfer that into, what line am I going to transfer? Okay, so 1-11-82218, and that's in retirement stipends that we provide once individuals retire with a certain amount of year. So, we've calculated it to the dollar, and so we'd move 71,700 out of this account and place it in the retirement stipends account because of recent, actually this week, retirements that occurred after the budget was allocated. So, it'll be a decrease in this particular line and an increase in another, but it's flat in the end. It's going to be a flat amount.
And Beth will be able to do these now for us, so at the end, we'll be able to have a real-time update to the budget. Because it's in a couple of different accounts that these teachers have retired in.
And that'll be in our next board packet?
Yes.
Who's retired?
Yes, on Monday.
Thank you.
Monday.
And then, the teacher's contract is coming up.
This is our last year's next year of the contract, so yes, we will be negotiating at the end of this year, the end of this school year, yeah.
Put that out there. Okay, any questions for Kathy with regard to Page 5, teacher salaries? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve Page 5, teacher salaries in the amount of $31,881,871. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, can I have a motion to tentatively approve Page 6, directors in the amount of $794,733?
Motion. Second. So, this account provides system-wide instructional support, services in reading, technology and media services, and school-to-career opportunities and student activity services at FHS. This is, you'll see this big decrease. Don't get too excited about it because it was a reserve for negotiations in the 18-19 budget year. So, our FPS EU, our non-certified association, the contract, not contact, contract has been settled, and so we've moved that amount out that we were holding in reserves. And the 19-20 fiscal year, you know, given that, we've settled that contract, and now we're putting that, those amounts in the following objects, 118, 119, 120, 122, 123, and partially in 114 to reflect a 2 percent increase in 18-19 and a 2 percent increase in 19-20. So, all those accounts are going to look a little higher than normal, but it's just that we're taking out the amount from reserve for negotiations, placing both the 18-19 increase and the 19-20 increase in all of those accounts.
Okay, thank you. Any questions with regard to Page 6, directors? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve Page 6, directors in the amount of $794,733. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? If I can have a motion to tentatively approve Page 7, advisors, coaches in the amount of $541,063.
Motion. Second. So, this provides coaching salaries for comprehensive co-curricular programming, sports, arts, and other enrichment activities that are at pay rates that are accordance, in accordance with the teacher's negotiated agreement. It also provides intramural sports, interscholastic sports, drama, and other activities conducted after school at IAR and FHS. We do have a page to participate. I always want to make sure we, there is an offset in this account because parents do pay per sport $100 with a cap of $400. Intramural, so that's something that we should just always highlight on this particular item. Intramural coaches at Westwoods and elementary schools are no longer funded through the board's budget. It's a self-sustaining basis, and the increase in this particular account is due to the athletic trainers contractual increase of 1.85 percent.
Okay, any questions for Kathy on Page 7? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve Page 7, advisors, coaches in the amount of $541,063. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? If I can have a motion to tentatively approve Page 8, teachers, substitutes in the amount of $568,032.
Motion. Second. So, this is a flat line item, and it's, this is to provide substitute coverage when teachers are absent due to illness or other areas, or other reasons, and to provide substitute teachers for field trips or outdoor experiences, and also coverage for any professional development that we might be doing. I would say this can be a volatile account. We can't always predict, you know, who will be out on maternity leave, who will be, you know, have an illness, an unexpected illness. So, we always, you know, budget a certain amount, but I will tell you, it's a very volatile account for us. So, we did not increase it, but, you know, that, I just want everyone to know that we have to keep an eye on it throughout every year.
Okay, any questions for Kathy with regard to Page 8, teachers, substitutes? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve Page 8, teachers, substitutes in the amount of $568,032. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? If I can have a motion to tentatively approve Page 9, tutors in the amount of $276,834.
Motion. Second. So, this account provides homebound tutoring instruction to students who cannot attend school due to significant needs. And it also, let's see, to provide itinerary instruction to support students, non-English-speaking students entering our schools. And the increase, this is one of those accounts that has the increase of 2 percent for 18-19 and another 2 percent for 19-20. Last year, the FHS job coach and EL, oh, actually, ELL tutors were moved into this account. So, that's why, that was something we did in last year's budget.
Okay, any questions with regard, for Kathy with regard to Page 9, tutors? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve Page 9, tutors in the amount of $276,834. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, can I have a motion to tentatively approve Page 10, aides in the amount of $2,798,885?
Motion. Second. This account includes providing intervention services to general education and special, and students in special education, in classroom support and outside classroom support. This does include, and I highlighted that on this slide, to, a decrease of two special services para professionals. And again, this is an account that has a 2 percent increase for 18-19 and a 2 percent increase for 19-20.
Okay. Any questions for Kathy with regard to Page 10, aides, instructional support personnel?
Can you just share the philosophy of eliminating those paras? Because we're increasing other FTEs in that social service area, right?
Yeah, so it's, when we do this, it's part of our zero-based budgeting and what the needs are at this time. I would say this is another volatile account because things can happen throughout the year that require us to increase staffing in para professionals if needed, and that's all driven by IEPs. And so, you know, at this point, when we look at everything, this is, you know, the decrease that we can make, but I will say that things can change.
Anything further, Michelle?
No.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve Page 10, aides, instructional support personnel in the amount of $2,798,885. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve Page 11, Office Personnel in the amount of $2,42,622?
Motion. Second. So, we've moved some money out of this account for the salary, a half of the salary of our communications specialist, but this particular account provides for support to administrators and school counselors, and it reflects, you know, our clerical staff. And the increase reflects a 2 percent increase in both 18-19 and 19-20 fiscal years.
And just when I was looking at this, Kathy, I mean, is there any redundancy with that salary being, can you just explain to Vince a little bit more with the other line item? I think it's captured in 3-1-3, but...
Right. When we get to 3-1-3, we're going to see a note in there talking about this, what Kathy just mentioned about moving the dollars out of the line. We had had a placeholder in the budget for this position, and now that the position has been filled, it is appropriate for the position to be in the public relations object. So, we moved the, it was $7,500, which was a placeholder inside of Object 120, the office personnel. We put the $7,500 into the public relations object, so now we have it in the correct object. In total, it's a little over $13,000 for that position.
Okay. Just in the descriptors unit, I want to make sure there's no redundancies in service, communication service, where this is just pulling out and changing. Okay, great, thank you. Any additional questions for Kathy or Vince on Page 11? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve Page 11, Office Personnel in the amount of $2,42,622. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve Page 12, Nurses Services in the amount of $692,846?
Motion. Second. This is a very, another volatile account, and this is our seven nurses in our schools, but also nurses for students who are receiving special education services. So, the increase is due to an increase in student need for special services nursing, and we've seen this over several years. The increase in special services, nursing services line is partially offset. So, we're actually, we've actually decreased this line because we anticipate Medicaid revenues. This really is very focused budgeting. The nurses' contract for 19-20 includes a 1.85 percent GWI for all steps and then step increase for all nurses at the top step.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Kathy with respect to Page 12, Nurses Services? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve Page 12, Nurses Services in the amount of $692,846. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve Page 13, Cafeteria Security Monitors Drivers in the amount of $569,096?
Motion. Second. So, for our monitors, this is really about safety and security. So, we have cafeteria monitors, our monitors throughout the school that were added in the year 13-14, and this also provides transportation monitors if a student in special services requires that. There is an increase, again, this is one of those lines, 2 percent in 18-19 and 2 percent in 19-20.
Thank you. Any questions for Kathy with respect to Page 13, Cafeteria Security Monitors and Drivers? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve Page 13, Cafeteria Security Monitors, Drivers in the amount of $569,096. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve Page 14, Custodial Services in the amount of $2,416,97?
Motion. Second. So, all our faculty and staff are amazing, and our custodians, I have to say, are also just extraordinary. We have had a very challenging week with temperatures and all the proactive work they do in these aging buildings. I mean, we, they're just kept at just an extraordinary level of cleanliness, and so we, a group of people that have worked very hard for us. And so, this includes an increase of 2 percent in 18-19, 19-20. It also includes, we have an agreement, we actually saved quite a bit of money. In our alt-school, we used to rent a facility for our alt-school, and we collaborated with the town on a building that was not being used. And so, we do, instead of paying rental to the town for that facility, instead, we pay all custodial fees for park and rec up to $30,000. But I would tell you that we were paying more in the rentals, so we've actually saved money by doing this very collaborative agreement with the town. It's just a wonderful example of how we do work with the town to try to, you know, contain costs as much as possible or even save, you know, expenditure, you know, what we had paid in the past. We've saved that, and you can think year over year how much that is. That's, you know, it's a pretty substantial amount of money, so our custodial staff.
I guess I'd be remiss on behalf of myself, not the board, for echoing your comments on our custodial staff.
Yeah.
I mean, they do a fantastic job with our schools, and so, for the record, thank them. But any questions for Kathy with regard to Page 14?
Just to clarify some of the worries, is provide a director of facilities to supervise the cleaning? Is this hiring a new director of facilities, or is this to increase their territory?
To provide a director of facilities? I think that's just inside of custodians is also the director of maintenance's salary. So...
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's just what's inside that...
I saw the director of, like, are we hiring a new director?
No, no, no.
No.
Existing, yeah.
Right. No, this, as Kathy mentioned, this just has the 2 percent increases for the two years. And there are some, certainly some cleaners, custodians who move up on step, so there's small increase associated with that. So, that's why it's not exactly 4 percent, but a little bit more than 4 percent.
As a step.
Yeah, but no new...
But is, I guess, is there currently a director of facilities in there?
Tim.
That's what we thought, yeah, okay, that's, okay, yeah, no.
When I read it, I'm like...
Yeah, when we read it, we're like, that's Tim, isn't it?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Quick question. Kathy, can you talk a little about...
Kathy, can you talk a little about the relationship between Parks and Rec and our staff in terms of how those buildings are staffed during the winter months, the weekends in particular, when you have, you know, rec basketball as, you know, practices and things like that? How does that work in terms of, because it's been, it's been asked of me on a number of occasions, you know, why isn't there more availability or more ease of access for community groups? I won't talk about somebody just coming in off the street, but community groups to use facilities at our schools for basketball or volleyball or any other kind of activities? Can you talk a little bit about that and why it's a bit of a challenge for us to deal with that?
Yeah, I mean, we have comprehensive programs and our, within the school district, so that is, anything in, within the school district takes first priority in our facilities, and then if that facility is available, then they work with, you know, Dawn in our office to, you know, carve out time that, you know, basketball will use it or any of those, you know, various park and rec programs.
Right. Okay, and then who's responsible for carrying the cost of the custodians during a park and rec? Like on a Saturday today, there'll be games over at Westwoods all day.
We are.
So we're covering the custodian that?
Right, as in agreement, that we created, so that in the past, they would pay, the town would pay for that. Now that we're using a town facility for our alternative school, instead of paying rental for the alternative school to the town, and, you know, it's kind of silly, it's all coming out of the same, you know, area, we made an agreement that instead of going back and forth with this, we won't pay for the alt-school, and we will pay up to $30,000 for park and rec to use our facilities and to have a custodian there.
And it is clear we have to have a custodian present?
You must, yes, absolutely.
Right, you can't have anyone else, someone there.
Oh, no, they're always, if our schools are open, the custodian has to be, a custodian has to be there.
All right, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any additional questions for Kathy on page 14? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 14, Custodial Services, in the amount of $2,411,697. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve...
I just have one item. So I wanted to, I probably should have said this at the beginning, there's some replacement pages that you should prob, just so you know, there was a bit of an error on page 15.
And we did hand them out.
And, yes, and so we corrected that, there, it was like a 1.15, something like that, in the clerical, and so we took, that shouldn't have been there, so we took that out, so it reduces, you know, the totals on FTE, but you have the replacement page, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 16, Employee Benefit Health Insurance, in the amount of $8,466,210?
Motion. Second. Sorry.
I think we're on page 16.
16, yes, 16.
So as I, I've been sharing with the board in the past couple of board meetings, the trend for claims is not as great as the trend for claims has been over the past couple of fiscal years. That's the primary driver for why there's a more significant, there's pressure on this area of the budget this year. That discussion that we've all had about stop-loss for the past couple of years, thankfully, that's not currently, but you never know in that, in that case, if you could have a high claimant, that could occur too. Right now, it is not the driver of it. The driver of this is the claims that are just quite, quite a bit, but not at that stop-loss level. So I've seen a few months of it developing, and I mentioned it to the board. And after talking with Steve Scholl, the district's health insurance consultant, and him giving me a early, you know, looking at our trend and then giving some early projections, then Amy Barrett and Beth Haber and myself sat down, carefully reviewed that stuff. I had a second call with the district, with Steve, and shared with Steve some of the contractual changes that have been achieved recently. Gave him that recent information, so his first number to me was even higher than this number. But after I gave him the new information about the contractual changes that are in place, that reduced, took a little bit of the pressure off of this projected increase. But still, it's, is a higher than what the board has seen for the past couple of years in this area. Kathy mentioned this in her presentation, even with this level, we're still below what the bigger trend folks out there. Yesterday, I was at a CASBO meeting, and I heard some of the other, my peers in the state, and some folks are dealing with barely significant increases way past what we're dealing with. And so this is what I believe is a responsible, what we need to do to responsibly keep the self-insurance program aligned.
So you would just, to summarize, this is a frequency problem, where in the past, it's been a severity problem?
Yes.
The best way to summarize it?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Any questions for Vince on page 16, Employee Benefit Health Insurance? Mark?
Is there any way to, at some point, get a breakdown of what the trends are in terms of the number of claims that are being done? Like where, where we're seeing that increase? If it's not severity, then is, if it's something new, maybe it's somewhere that we need to look at for?
There absolutely is. I have just now scheduled, just this past week, I scheduled a review with Cigna, so the Cigna folks are coming to Town Hall to meet with myself and Amy and possibly other administrators. And Cigna will break it down as far as we want to, as deep as we want to go. Cigna is also prepared to give us, they do every year, but they're, they're prepared to give us ideas on how we can focus in on trends.
They do that every year?
Yep, every year.
And we have next steps every year?
Yep.
Given the trends that we see? You know, so it could be that, you know, we incentivize certain things to, you know, and I think just contractually, we've, we have been strategic in really focusing on preventative measures, because we know that if everyone's doing the preventative care, then we're not going to be seeing as much of, you know, the catastrophic claims or that type of thing.
Right, because if we're seeing a slight increase because of preventative, long-term, we won't see as many catastrophes.
It's a great point.
Right, right.
Yep.
Right.
Okay, any additional questions for Kathy or Vince on page 16? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 16, Employee Benefit Health Insurance, in the amount of $8,466,210. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? If I can have a motion to tentatively approve page 19, Life Insurance, Long-Term Disability and Other, in the amount of $238,543?
Motion. Second. This is our life insurance, AD&amp;D, and long-term disability coverage for employees, and it reflects our negotiated contract.
Yep, absolutely.
Who's the carrier for the life disability? What's that? Who's the internal carrier for the life disability? Dander?
Okay, any additional questions for Kathy on page 19, Life Insurance, Long-Term Disability and Other? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 19, Life Insurance, Long-Term Disability and Other, in the amount of $238,543. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? If I can have a motion to tentatively approve page 20, Medicare, in the amount of, FICA Medicare, in the amount of $1,344,254?
Motion. Second.
So this is to provide Medicare component of Social Security benefits to all certified employees that were hired after April 16th, very specific date, 1986. Previously, that was something that wasn't included in the Social Security plan, so...
NJ, this is a system calculated number that NJ calculates, and then we put into the budget based on payroll.
Okay, any questions for Kathy or Vince on page 20, FICA Medicare? All right, the motion to tentatively approve page 20, FICA Medicare, in the amount of $1,344,254. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 21, Retirement Contributions, in the amount of $153,723?
Motion.
Okay, so this is where we should do, we have to transfer the funding, so the teacher's salary will go down, and this will go up, and we need that new amount. So it would be a motion to increase this 230.
With 225,423. Say that one more time. Got it, thank you.
So what's that total number?
225,423.
But that's on top of, is that the new number, or is that on top of the 150?
That's the new number.
That's the total number?
That's the new number, so we're gonna, and that's a 71,700.
So what do we do with the 71,700?
That makes sense.
So we're going to reduce, and anyone can correct me, reduce the teacher's salary account 113 by 71,700 and increase the 2...
Is that the exact number?
The, the new benefit number is 225,423.
But the transfer is 71,700.
Yes.
Yeah. And then increase the 230 line by 71,700 for a total of 225,423 for the retirement contributions line.
We'll have new pages Monday night.
What's that?
We'll have new pages Monday night.
Yes, you'll have new pages.
Okay, so I'm gonna have to, you have to go back and...
Can I withdraw my motion?
Yeah.
You can start over.
Okay, we'll start over, but we probably should also go back to 113.
No, we didn't, that's what we did.
Did we already do that with the right number?
Oh, did we do the motion?
I just want to make sure we didn't.
I didn't think...
No, no. We should go back.
I think we talked about it.
We talked about it.
Okay, let's do this one, and then we'll go back.
Yeah, let me do this, because we're on it, and then we'll go back.
So you want to start by going back to 113, we'll reduce it, right?
No.
To teach your...
Start here.
We'll start here, we'll just do this one, we're here.
Oh, okay, all right.
So can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 21, Retirement Contributions, in the amount of $225,423?
Motion. Second.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Kathy on that? So that's the, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So then, if we can go back to...
Page five.
Page five. So where are we, page five?
So hold on.
And so the numbers...
So how do we do that?
Yeah, how do we go?
And now you're going to reduce it by...
And Beth will read it on.
Yeah, so we're gonna reduce it by 71,700, and the new total is 31,810,171.
Okay. Thank you, Beth.
So reduce, yeah, yeah, reduce the 113 line on page five by 71,700 for a total of
All right, so if I can have a motion to tentatively approve page five, teacher salaries, reflecting a reduction in the amount of 71,700 for a new amount of 31,810,171.
Motion.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Okay, so page 25. Okay. I was up there?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 22, Unemployment Insurance, in the amount of $36,500?
Second. So there's a slight increase on this, in this particular line, and it's just what we know about at this point, so it's, it has to do with the needs at this moment that increase, and this is for unemployment.
Okay. Any questions for Kathy? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 22, Unemployment Insurance, in the amount of $36,500. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 23, Workers' Compensation, in the amount of $310,164?
Motion. Second.
Okay, so this is to provide workers' compensation insurance required by law for all employees, and the increase reflects just the contract for next year.
Any questions for Kathy? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 23, Workers' Compensation, in the amount of $310,164. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? If I can have a motion to tentatively approve page 20, Father, for other employee benefits in the amount of $2,200?
Motion. Second.
This is not a volatile account. It's to provide a pair of safety shoes for each of our custodians, per the contract.
Any questions? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 24, Other Employee Benefits, in the amount of $2,200. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I have a motion to tentatively approve page 25, Summer Teachers, in the amount of $388,945.
Motion. Second.
So this is summer learning opportunity, this is where we fund summer learning opportunities for students, including special services summer learning, and the increase is due to the need for an onsite social worker, and then there's a small increase in the summer Exploration Academy teacher stipend, but the major driver in this particular account is special services summer programming, and it's based on student need.
Any questions for Kathy on page 25? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 25, Summer Teachers, in the amount of All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 26, Public Relations Services, in the amount of $51,420?
Motion. Second.
So this account provides funding for our community newsletters and community relations K-12. It provides funding for Board of Education meetings and district and community-wide events, and this is the place where, you know, half of the communications specialist's salary was moved from Object 120 to 313.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 26, Public Relations Services, in the amount of $51,420. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? If I can have a motion to tentatively approve page 27, Student Services, in the amount of $41,631?
Motion. Second.
This particular object provides funding for K-12 orientation programs, assemblies and commencement, and the increase is due to IAR assemblies, and if you remember, we had an internet safety speaker that did come to IAR, and that was highly successful, so we want, you know, to budget for that, and I think there's also an author visit in there too. Those are the two areas for IAR.
Okay, any questions for Kathy? All right, the motion to tentatively approve page 27, Student Services, in the amount of $41,631. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 28, Other Student Services, in the amount of $72,155?
Motion. Second.
So this provides funding for Club 712, including our drama services, which we're so proud of, it's an award-winning program here at FHS, and you see a decrease in here, and it really is just our zero-based budgeting analysis for unified theaters that resulted in a reduction in that particular area.
Okay, any questions for Kathy with regard to page 28? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 28, Other Student Services, in the amount of $72,155. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 29, Professional Education Services, in the amount of $513,836?
Motion. Second.
So I mentioned this in my presentation, this account covers consultation services and curriculum development, but the driver is on the consultation services, and this has to do with special services. I will tell you that this would be a much higher amount in this particular object, but we do offset the costs in here with excess cost grant that we receive from the state for sp... for special education.
Okay, any questions for Kathy? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 29 professional education services in the amount of 513,836 dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 32 supporting educational services in the amount of 27,517 dollars?
Motion, second.
So I didn't know, Kim had two pages in here that related to curriculum development and if no one has any questions, we just go on to page 32. I didn't want to ignore Kim's hard work.
Okay. Do you want to have your moment in the sun, Kim?
No, I'm happy just sitting right here.
We'd welcome it, you brought some sun and warmth, you know, into our lives after the last week.
Our curriculum committee did, you know, provide an overview at our last board meeting, but I just didn't want to ignore Kim.
Okay, no questions? The motion to tentatively approve page 32 supporting educational services in the amount of 27,517 dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 33 professional employee training and development in the amount of 189,155 dollars?
Motion, second.
So this is where we place funding for in-service professional, you know, training and professional development for our faculty, administration and staff. And we do have an increase for new social emotional, social emotional learning curriculum and, you know, this has been a focus for us and a need and so we want to put some additional funding in here for that training. And it is based to, we have a committee that's running right now studying social emotional learning, they will be providing recommendations, but we, just knowing where we are right now, we know we're going to need additional funding for training.
Okay, any questions for Kathy on page 33? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 33 professional employee training and development in the amount of 189,155 dollars, all in favor? Aye opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 34 other professional services in the amount of 257,161 dollars?
Motion, second.
So, legal fees and services, audit fees, legal negotiations, legal services for special education, physical therapy services, first responder OSHA program, insurance consultant services and first aid courses are all budgeted here and there is an increase, some of it is just looking at what we're spending and having, and placing in an increase and other, you know, we have negotiations coming up, so we want to properly budget for that.
Okay, any questions for Kathy on page 34? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 34 other professional services in the amount of 257,161 dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions?
Less.
Apologize. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 35 data processing services in the amount of 333,548 dollars?
Motion, second.
So there is an increase here and it does, this particular object provides for core applications and systems for district operations. There are two different drivers, one is Paper Cut, which we're using to manage our print and copiers and we have a first year of a renewal. And also the second is Power School Power Pack, that's a set of tools and utilities for our data staff and it interacts with Power School and we know as parents, we use Power School quite a bit. Oh, and then there is a third, a placeholder for a new parent app for bus services and this is part of our safety and security in transportation. We, you'll see in equipment, additional cameras in our, in our buses and then this is a GPS so that parents, hopefully by mid-year as we get up and running, would be able to know where their child's bus is and that requires an app, that requires additional funding.
Okay, any questions for Kathy on page 35? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 35 data processing services in the amount of 333,548 dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 36 water in the amount of 46,635 dollars?
Motion, second.
I don't have a lot to say.
This is a good thing to have, duly noted.
Water.
Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 36 water in the amount of 46,635 dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions? I hope that would be no objections to that.
We're here.
And the next one too, probably. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 37 sewer charge in the amount of 28,156 dollars?
Motion, second.
Okay.
So the reduction here is our collaboration between the town and the board, so we're, you know, we calculate, you know, the cost and we did some improvements at the facility level and so there's a slight decrease here.
Okay, any questions? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 37 sewer charge in the amount of 28,156 dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 38 disposal services in the amount of 75,651 dollars?
Motion, second.
Famous water.
Yeah, okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 38 disposal services in the amount of 75,651 dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 39 equipment repair in the amount of 136,475 dollars?
Motion, second.
Okay, so you see quite an increase here and that is mainly due to GPS that I just mentioned in our buses. It funds also additional cameras that will be installed in our buses per our new transportation, our renewal of our transportation contract.
What portion of that increase is attributable to the cameras and the GPS, just so?
There's, inside of this object, there's only one line that's about transportation, it's called upkeep vehicles and that's where the material part of this increases. So that's 41,945, so GPS and cameras, that's what that increase is.
Okay. The motion to tentatively approve, I should, I'm sorry, any other questions on that?
It's better likely to be a one-time expense. In other words, by putting in the cameras all at once, we're going to have that go-
We have an ongoing expense associated with cameras and GPS.
Because they have to be updated regularly, yeah.
Yep.
And my question was just, all the buses will have cameras now?
All the large buses will have them.
Yes.
Right now I think we're about half, so now we'll have all buses, we'll have it.
Any additional questions? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 39 equipment repair in the amount of 136,475 dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 40 building repair in-house in the amount of 325,576 dollars?
Motion, second.
So I did mention this in my presentation, the reduction in this line would be associated with savings and security systems, we're switching to a more cost-effective camera system throughout this whole K-12. So that's the, going to be annual saving.
This is a good one, Paige.
Oh, am I on the wrong page? I'm sorry. I was so excited about that saving that I jumped ahead, but no, okay, so-
This one's really just a cost of living type of increase, very minor increase. Tim does look at all of his accounts, some run over, some he has some savings in, so we base it on a, looking at CPI, you know, CPI, cost of living.
Okay, any questions for Vince or Kathy? Again, a shout out to Tim and the crew.
Yeah, he does a great job. He has many, many individual accounts for all the different schools, but this is what we thought was the increase needed.
They do a great job, so, okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 40 building repair in-house in the amount of 325,576 dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions? Okay, can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 41 building repair contractors in the amount of 139,689 dollars?
Motion, second.
Alright Kathy.
Okay, so I've already celebrated savings in this account, so I won't go through it again. We also, I don't have much else to say about this because there's not, you know, that's really the material savings, right?
Yep, the material savings is what Kathy discussed about the security system and the way we're changing the security system. There are, again, there are, this is mainly Tim Harris's area, there are many different lines in here, like elevator licenses and upkeeps and things, I mean, you name it, types of things. But again, that's based on a very small increase, we just look at it, he does zero-based budgeting and then we do a cost of living type increase.
Okay, any questions on page 41? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 41 building repair contractors in the amount of 139,689 dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions? I have a motion to tentatively approve page 42 building repair projects in the amount of 256,699 dollars.
Motion, second.
Okay, so we're going to have Matt in a moment put up the major facility projects PowerPoint. I know that all of you-
Everyone should.
Have it.
We do.
So this is where we budget for our major projects, I mentioned this actually in the presentation, our K-8 facility assessment provides short and long-term projects that we are implementing both in this line and in our capital improvement line. So we're going to queue that up and we're going to go school by school what's in the budget for major facility projects.
Developing the major project requests, one of the earliest parts of the whole budget process is Tim, Tim Harris and I go around to every one of the schools, sit down with each one of the principals and the head custodian and the principal and head custodian give Tim and I, from their very close to the point, you know, way, they give us a list of the items, they prioritize some what they, they feel from their perspective is most important. We come back to the central office and then Tim and I, Tim spends many weeks looking at costs associated with these major projects. There's some discussion about could something fall into a capital budget versus the board's budget, that all happens in end of November and then December. And then eventually these projects that are not capital projects but are still major, quote unquote, major projects, they get prioritized and put into the board's budget. Finally, Tim and I talk with Kathy about it, she reviews all of these and then we create this presentation. So I see-
So you should just go over the, so there's a key on the, on the very first page and we thought it would be helpful for the board and community to know, you know, each project, what bucket it fits in and so if you see the star, it's really a safety item and that could be a safety item related to our students and community coming into our building, but it also can be a safety item for our custodians. Some of the equipment that we can, we're using, it's aging, it's aging out and we want to ensure that we have the safest equipment and the most updated equipment, which create a lot of efficiencies for us when we have, you know, the very most-
Absolutely.
Updated equipment. So that, the star indicates a safety item, then we have that little red shape there which indicates a K-8 facility assessment item and then a circle indicates a programmatic improvement or a need. So we just thought that that would be helpful for the community and for the board if we had that. And so I know Vince is going to go over the major facilities.
Yeah, and I'm just going to add on with the small little symbol thing Kathy mentioned about the facility assessment, even stepping back, the principals and the head custodians have those facility assessments. When we sat down, Tim and I sat down with the principals and head custodians, we used that document. So I can remember specifically at Noah Wallace where Carrie Huber and John Sapansky, they had, they had exactly from the prior report what they were working on. So I think that was a great investment that the town and the board made in that document and we continue to use it, it's a living document. So, so this is FHS, there could have been a lot of projects at FHS and we, after meeting with Bill and Kurt and Vic Mashad up here, they did give us many projects, but we're being very conscious about this facility for obvious reasons. The two projects that are being put forward for the board's consideration is the, in the main gym and there's a photo on, if we click to the next thing, this is the main gym. The interest from the school administration and from Jack Valant is to strip, repaint and reseal the main gym floor. This is something that they have been putting off, putting off, putting off and they have, they have put it forward, we are putting it forward, so, yep.
I've talked to Jack about it just because I, I'm curious why, you know, why is this such a priority? And he explained that they, they do work on the floor every year as part of their summer work and they do a phenomenal job. We're so fortunate, again, our custodians do a phenomenal job, but when you don't do kind of the sanding down a bit every so often, it can, the layers end up starting to become a little slippery. So he said it's, it's something that, you know, they've wanted to do for quite some time and I can't, I can't remember the amount of years, but it has been a very long time before, you know, since we've done this. So I felt that after hearing that, it was more of a safety type of situation, so we, we brought that forward to the board.
Is the logo being repainted?
That would be part of it, yes.
Not safety for our students and the ones we're hosting, so, yeah, that's nice to be doing.
The other item at the high school is heavy-duty shelving racks and gym storage. I did see another photo, we didn't put it into the presentation, but we just need better shelving racks in this area, we have a lot of equipment that's out. And we're always conscious about that type of stuff to make sure that it could be reused type of purchases, Tim is always thinking that way. So those are the two items at the high school. Any questions?
Ellen?
Vince, does it ever come up, the bleachers, the state of our bleachers in the main gym? Because I'm just floored it not to see that year after year, even some sort of, because it's a safety issue.
Yeah.
They are extremely dangerous, not only for students, but for aging population, parents, grandparents, and I'm approached about it quite a bit up there. But even some sort of a temporary fix, does it ever come up?
I, in this most recent one, I don't think it came up, but it has absolutely come up in, as we've looked at the high school over the past couple of years. I think there's a reluctance about doing any major work on, because of the costs associated with bleachers. At IAR, we did have bleachers brought up and it's not being put forward, but they, we also are looking at IAR's bleachers right now. But there's, I think the cost associated with that type of an improvement-
Significant.
Significant.
Even temporary, railing, anything.
Isn't it true that if you start doing that, you have to really do a complete, you can't just put temporary stuff, once you start doing ADA upgrade, you've got to go full in, right?
Well, I'm not sure because it just depends on, you know, you can do sections and things, you can make some adjustments, we can look into that, Ellen, just to see if there is a temporary type of solution, we can definitely do that.
Sure. It's a valid thing to be talking about now.
Yeah.
There are a lot of equipment things at the high school.
I mean, we could, this could take over everything if we were really to put forth, I mean, that's why we're looking at a project, a high school project, because there's significant needs.
I just look at that as a real safety issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Any additional questions?
Okay. Okay, the next school we're looking at is the middle school and this, the first, first thing that's being proposed is cafeteria seating expansion. The IAR cafeteria is, as I have brought up in the facilities assessment has shown and our principals last year and this year have all- our principals last year and this year have all been discussing, is full to the max, and we need to improve the seating there for our students. There's a concept right now for doing a seating expansion that would be a temporary fix to just give some more seats in there, some, a little bit more flexible seating too, for kids to get in and out of there. So this is being proposed. The next thing I do have a photo of, it's toilet partitions, and this would be a phased-in project. Randy Lindstrom and Scott Herbert's brought this up, they would like to replace the toilet partitions across the, in the entire school. So we started doing some price, Tim started doing some pricing about it, and we decided after they proposed it, that we're going to propose it here in a phased-in way. So we're starting with the art wing, and then going to the gym and auditorium bathrooms to replace those toilet partitions.
Are we replacing them because they look like that, or they're not functional?
They're, I'm gonna say it's for two things, I mean, they're aged, it is very aged, it's absolutely had scratches and other things on them. In some cases, there's rust areas around those, the attaching things. So I think it's for a combination of both reasons, you know? But it, this, that equipment has been there for, I don't know how long, but a very long time. So I wonder if Kim would tell us from years and years and years.
I really don't have bathroom partition memories.
Decades ago.
I'm wondering, maybe it's a little question, but is there still, like, a lot of graffiti that happens in the bathroom?
I was gonna ask, is that deterioration graffiti or aging? Some is, some, there is some graffiti, and that staff at the school immediately go in there and address that. So there is years and years and years of that that's occurred, and that affects it.
I didn't know if there was a lot of that going on.
I'm not gonna say that, I don't think it's an overwhelming amount, and it's tried, they try to address it. They have the concept of, you know, don't leave it out, address it right away so it doesn't draw more. So, but it's just age, I'm gonna, I'm gonna frame it as it's just old equipment, been there a long time.
And just on the seating, I will say, it probably should have a circle next to that cafeteria seating expansion, because it has to do with programmatic changes. We are trying to change the schedule, and similar to the high school, we have undersized cafeterias here in town, and so same issue as FHS. And if we were to expand seating, maybe even outside of the cafeteria, it would allow us, as a temporary fix, we certainly don't wanna have that as our permanent fix, but as a temporary fix, it would be very helpful. And then if, you know, in capital, there is a proposal for an IAR cafeteria expansion, we would still use that seating, you know, in the future, we could, we could use it because we've increased the seating. Just wanted to mention that the programmatic piece into that.
Next school is West Woods. There's a number of items at West Woods. Kathy mentioned this earlier, this is a great example, this auto scrubber. The request from West Woods is to get a new auto scrubber. This is a piece of equipment that will definitely improve the custodians and their ability to do cleaning. So it will assist them in their work. So that piece of equipment is being requested. The lower-level bulletin boards, replace and redesign, we're, we are, we have, we have architects in district who are helping us with the security projects, and one of the projects we're doing is the West District office relocation, which is also gonna have some bulletin board work done too. So Tim and I are kinda, we're, we have this expert, experts that we're talking with. So we're looking at lots of different, we're trying to get from them ideas of what to do with replacing and redesigning these bulletin boards at the, at the school. So that is a project being proposed. Classroom painting, this is a phased project. We've been doing, we've had a placeholder in many schools, many summers, we try to keep a routine of painting different areas. It's really tough at West Woods because of the use that West Woods gets all year long. So I know Tim is very conscious about this, keep a placeholder in there, keep his painting, summer painting crew always doing something at that school in regards to keeping the classrooms looking great. The entry sidewalk drainage at the rear of grade six, this is just, this is something that Jean Laterno, our staff member of the year, brought up as a, just a small repair, but an important repair to drainage over at that school that he's seen. The last item, and especially with this cold weather that we've experienced, we've been experiencing, Tim is, is working with our contractors and, and his head custodians, and they're, they are pinpointing where they need to do these pipe insulation, better pipe insulation, to prevent any of these super-cold days freezing pipes that may be in somewhat exposed locations. And we've had a couple of these occur in the past couple of years, and it's, I am thankful that Tim and all the team members are finding them and trying to prevent that stuff from occurring, because it could cost the district a lot of money if we did have a frozen pipe.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What's the purpose and the benefit of redesigning? What are we hoping has us in?
That's, that would be a great, that's a great question. I mean, the bulletin, the bulletin boards, I don't think they think are functional.
Yeah, I mean, a part of it is a discoloration that's happening, that we're not really sure why this discoloration is happening, and the lower level with those bulletin boards. So I think we need a new product down there. That's what I've heard.
Yeah.
At least. Whatever that bulletin board is made of, for some reason, we're having lots of, like, spots of discoloration.
I think Jean had talked about it too during the facility, when we did the walkthrough. So as they spend time, like, attaching things, and then on attaching them, they get the spreading, and things don't stick the same way, and so they can't use them the same way that they're intended for.
Yeah, and-
Very good.
And that's why we have Angela Cahill, the architect, who's helping us with West District, and we're trying to pick her brain about what types of new bulletin board wall type coverings we can use. So there isn't an exact thing picked right at this minute, but Tim has got a placeholder in here for that project. We're gonna try to come up with a good way to redesign it. Okay, East Farms. East Farm, the tractor replacement, that would be another example of aged equipment. There is a tractor over there, it's over twenty years old, it is not running that well. We need to replace it. We, in the past few years, we've replaced other elementary schools' tractors. This, this, that's, that is one of our current tractors, I think that's Union's tractor. And-
Say, that looks pretty good for twenty years.
I know.
No, no, that's the, that's the current, that's what we replace it to, you're looking at.
Yeah, no, that's not the old one, that's one of the ones we replaced.
That's the new one.
So that's what it would look like.
Pro tip, show the one that's not working.
I know.
Trying to sell me a tractor, show me the one that's not.
We don't need that, that one's, that one looks just fine. So that's the, that's the big one. Repointing the chimney, that is, that was something called out in the facilities assessment report, we're just ticking off items on that. And the tack walls and the hallway landings, this is phased, it was there last year, we're again working towards replacing these tack walls in the landings at East Farms. At Noah Wallace, carpet machine, walk behind, this is to replace a aged piece of equipment, and to improve with the piece of equipment. I think they're, they have a machine up here at the high school that they've, they like, and this would be the one that they replace at Noah Wallace. And suspended ceilings, there's a photo, this was brought up by Dr. Huber, Tim Harris has seen these too, John Sopansky, there's a couple of, we, there's a few different issues about some of these suspended ceilings. We're listing the classrooms that we're specifically going to be working in, and replacing these ceilings. There's some broken panel things, there's some panel things that are falling down, this is just aged, again, this is because of an aged facility. Maintenance. At West District, the, replacing the blinds in rooms, Tim has outlined the blinds that would be replaced. As I recall, Union School, we had done many blind replacements over the past couple of years, and I think we're coming to, coming to a conclusion at Union School, but now West District School, Tim's doing some blind replacement. Exterior door replacement, and this, and I have phased, and then we have the facilities assessment symbol next to it. I'm gonna emphasize this one for a second. This is the beginning of this door replacement. In the, one of the most material items inside of the facility assessment for all K eight facilities was the building envelope, the windows and doors of our schools, all of our schools, with the exception of West Woods being the new school, that we, there are many doors that we need to replace, upgrade for energy efficiency and for the type of locks and things that are on those doors. And, and then the most material aspect of both of that is the windows. When windows start to be discussed in the district, that is a very big cost to replace windows at facilities, and that's one of the biggest things in the facility assessment report, though, that we need to think about, maybe plan for. So the last one is replace the gym floor at West District. This has been a item that has been talked about, as long as I've been business administrator, it's been talked about. When I was Excel Director, it was discussed. This has been something that's been way on the people's agenda for a long time. I think one of the most important reasons why it's being put forward right now, there are so many things, there, we're, we're thinking of this as a really comprehensive type of work to happen at West District this summer, because West District's main office is moving, there's gonna be that entryway improvements and security improvements, and the gym is right there, as you're aware, the gym is right there, this is the time to do these projects. So it's being put forward.
Is there a cost savings in doing it at the same time, or is it just a matter of, since we're there, do it?
Well, one, one thing I'm gonna say, Mark, is that the school is quote-unquote offline for summer, you know, for Park and Rec and for other programs, so because it's offline, we're, that's another reason why this makes sense to do this project at the same time for, because we're doing the other work at the same time.
Right, you'd have to have two summers instead of one, you know, you'd be offline this summer, and then if you did it later, you know, so-
Yep, that's one piece. And then corridor flooring at West District is coming down the pike too, and I think Tim is interested in doing the major floor before he even gets into the corridor flooring, which is in the, will be capital request because of the costs associated with that. We have the, we have the inside-the-bucket placeholder that says West District corridor flooring, that's not to, you know, that's to begin building up dollars for doing the corridor, rest of the corridors at West District.
Well, I mean, it's, that West District gym floor, it's embarrassing that we have not done that West District gym floor before now. It's unacceptable. It is a safety issue. Parks and Rec uses that gym floor all day, every Saturday. I, I mean, it needs to be done. It doesn't need to be done because there's a cost savings, or because they're, because we're moving the front office, it needs, this is the year it needs to be done, end of story. There's no reason to not do it this year. It should've been done eight years ago. So, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it needed to be done a long time ago. And it certainly needs to be done if you're redoing outside doors that go into the flooring. I mean, you can't redo outdoors and not do the flooring underneath the doors at the same time, that's ridiculous. But that floor is unacceptable. It's been there for forty years. I'm not kidding. It's just not acceptable. I mean, we have a duty to the safety of the, all of the people who use that floor.
I look forward to doing it.
Oh, you're fine, you're fine.
And, oh, and there it is, window blind replacement completes the phased project. So again, what I was saying about West District, this would be the ending of the window blinds project at Union.
You might wonder why we have safety, but it is a safety, security requirement that we have blinds, you know, for security purposes too, so, you know, we're trying to update them across the district.
Classroom cabinetry replacement upgrade, I think in the photo that is the next slide, Tim gave you an example of this, and just saying that the, he is going to be looking at and improving the cabinetry, improving, improving the storage, and just upgrading inside of some classrooms at Union School. All right, that is the, that is it. I'm happy to talk about any of those more in detail needed.
Yes.
Okay, yes, Chrissy.
I know Tim isn't here, but I just, I will, I appreciate that there's, you know, something from the facility report, like you said, checking things off.
Yeah.
I appreciate that there's something at every school for that.
Great.
I mean, obviously, you know, that's looming over all of our heads, we wanna get that done, so, you know, kudos to Tim and his team, because I definitely appreciate that there's, obviously, I mean, I agree with the floors, Rec uses that for basketball at West District, and, you know, the high school as well. Obviously, I love basketball, but, you know, I definitely appreciate that, you know, there's something from the facility report, plus safety, you know, he's checking off a lot of things here, and I like that, so.
Great, I'll pass that along.
Thank you.
I also really appreciate the fact that Tim and Vince meet with each custodian and principal too, because there could be things that weren't in those reports but are like an issue on a daily basis, so I think we're doing a great job with implementing the report and, like, the just-in-time, this is a problem, fix it before it gets a big, to be a bigger issue. So I do appreciate just the, you know, process that we use to get to this place.
Yeah, I mean, these are good projects, you know, I mean, you really can't argue any of them.
Yep, I'm sorry, yes.
Well, I just wanted to say about a couple of things. So the IAR cafeteria, I know that Scott has been, I mean, he's on the cafeteria committee, so I know that that's, the size of the cafeteria is a huge problem for him. It is programmatic, it's a, it's a problem at IAR. So I do appreciate that there's a temporary fix in the works, because it was a little distressing that we were gonna have to wait so long to have some kind of fix to that problem, so I really do like to see the temporary solution, I think that's great, it'll, it'll, I think it is a problem for the students at IAR to be so cramped, they don't, they can't find seats, they, it makes them not enjoy lunch, it's supposed to be a less stressful time of the day for them, and it becomes stressful. So I think that that's actually great. And as for the high school floor, I think that realistically speaking, even if we were to get right on the ball with the high school at this point, like, let's say tomorrow, miraculously there was some project that was gonna come down the road, we're still looking at a-
Do you know something I don't know?
No, I just said miraculously. We'd still be looking at a couple of years down the road, so, I mean, that is a safety issue that if you were on schedule to do that sort of safety thing at the, for the, you'd only get a couple of years, you're supposed to do it every couple of years anyway. So that, to me, sounds like a very good thing to be doing, do every couple of years anyway.
I will say, so we do kind of the normal-
Right, no, I understand, yeah.
-stripping of the floor, we do that every year.
Right.
This is a much more, you know-
Yeah, you'd strip it all the way down.
Yeah, you're, you're definitely-
But I mean, you want-
Doing a lot more.
You want the students, and I think, I think you said, the visiting students also, I mean, it's not just this, it's not just our students, it's the visiting students. So I think you want everyone to be safe, and I've been at schools where they play basketball, and you see the kids sliding all around on the floor, and it's not, you get nervous. get nervous.
It's here.
Yeah.
I've been, it's here, yeah.
So, you don't like, you don't want that.
I've seen Jack actually get out in the middle of a game, and go, "Jack, our athletic director, the last game I was at, was wiping the floor during the game."
Yeah, well, I've seen that, too, but, I mean, you don't, that's not good, you don't want that situation, you don't want that to be your school, so that's a good use of funds. But, the other thing I appreciate is that the, our, all of our schools are also a workplace for a lot of people, and it's not just the students, so I think that we do have to be mindful of the fact that a lot of the safety things that we do are for our employees as well, so the custodians, and the teachers, and the staff, it's a workplace, so I think it's great that we take into account, and that, that Tim takes into account the employees, and sometimes we lose sight of that, that this is a workplace for a lot of people, and we have to be mindful of that, and this, these projects do take that into account, so I think that's to be appreciated, and sometimes we lose sight of that, so it's important.
Thank you, Liz. Any additional questions on building repairs and projects? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 42, building repair projects in the amount of $256,699, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 51, lease of building in the amount of $2,200?
Motion, second.
So, no increase, but this is a, an object that we fund storage containers, and this is when we don't have adequate room, you know, within our school facilities, and, and so we do have some storage containers that we take.
Questions? The motion to tentatively approve page 51, lease of building in the amount of $2,200, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 52, lease of equipment in the amount of $121,035?
Motion, second.
So, this provides copier services for the board of ed and school offices, and we did negotiate this contract with the ERC, which is a 10-town consortium to try to get better pricing.
Any questions for Kathy, or Vince, on page 52? I mean, that consortium still works decidedly in our favor.
Oh, definitely.
Absolutely, yeah. Yep, absolutely. Realize some good benefits out of that.
Right, not only purchasing, but sharing of practices and ways to, you know, try to contain costs or save, you know, on costs.
Yep, both in this area, in our on-call safety contract that we have, the ERC, it's also a good group of folks just to bounce off what's occurring in some of our local school systems, so, no, very beneficial.
Okay, great. Any additional questions? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 52, lease of equipment in the amount of $121,035, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 53, transportation services in the amount of $3,492,798?
Motion, second.
So, the, this provides for transportation services for all students, and there is a, we just recently completed negotiations for this contract, so there is a larger than we usually experience, a 4.5 increase in 1920, and that really is in relation to where we stand in comparison to other school districts, and it necessitated a larger increase. And, we also, there's a little change, we used to have an $85,000.
Fuel.
Fuel item in here, and we've moved that to object 626, which is more appropriate to be in that object.
Okay, any questions for Kathy on page 53, transportation services? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 53, transportation services in the amount of $3,492,798, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 54, field trips in the amount of $9,928?
Motion, second.
So, this is transportation for field trips.
Yep, directly corresponds just to the percentage increase in the contract.
So, we apply that same contract increase here.
So, we know questions, the motion to tentatively approve 54, page 54, field trips in the amount of $9,928, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 55, telephone in the amount of $115,704?
Motion, second.
There's no increase in this line.
No questions, the motion to tentatively approve page 55, telephone in the amount of $115,704, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 56, postage in the amount of $52,942?
Motion, second.
And providing postage for district mailing.
Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 56, postage in the amount of $52,942, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve, approve page 57, data line in the amount of $163,764?
Motion, second.
So, this is our internet service, both for administrative needs and instructional use for our students, what is the.
I think it was just a zero-based budgeting, you know, when Matt and I looked at it carefully, you know, what the contract was going to be for the data line, we saw that that could happen.
Yep. Any questions? The motion to tentatively approve page 57, data line in the amount of $163,764, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 58, printing in the amount of $34,382?
Motion, second.
So, I think this is also, you know, just budgeting for what we need, I don't think it has to do with this particular meeting and all the copies we made, it's just generally. So, it's a slight, slight increase of $613.
I just, I just compliment Matt on his hard work about copiers and printing, because he's spending lots of time thinking about reducing printing, which is very expensive, and maximizing copying, which is not to make more copiers, but to, to move what we can there, because it's less expensive to do copying on the contract, so Matt's done a lot of hard work here.
Thank you, Matt.
Quick question.
Wherever you are. Yep, Mark.
Does this price include, like, stamps, mailing?
That was in the postage.
It wasn't in the postage, yeah.
Nothing in here, not in that one.
Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 58, printing in the amount of $34,382, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 59, public tuition in the amount of $153,530?
Motion, second.
This is a very volatile account, and it is some, you know, it's based on students' IEPs, and this has to do with special services. We do, this would be a larger amount, but we do reduce it by what we're anticipating in the excess cost grant that we receive from the state of Connecticut.
Okay, any questions for Kathy on this? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 59, public tuition in the amount of $153,530, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 60, private tuition in the amount of $793,031?
Sorry, motion, second.
Again, a very volatile object, and this, once again, is partially offset by the excess cost grant that we receive for this, from the state of Connecticut for special education.
Okay, any questions for Kathy on page 60? Okay, the motion to, I'm sorry, no, okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 60, private tuition in the amount of $793,031, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 61, tuition to educational services agencies in the amount of $146,000?
Motion, second.
So, the Farmington Valley Diagnostic Center is a collaborative that we're part of, and really an excellent program for our students, and that is more short-term placement if, if that's needed, so that amount of money that we spend in that particular area is in this object, and also, when students, whether it's open-choice students coming to us, or our students going to magnet schools, the responsibility for special services falls on the, the town that the child is, resides in, so we do have to budget for students who might be at magnet schools that require some special education services.
Any questions for Kathy on page 61? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 61, tuition to educational services agencies in the amount of $146,000, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 62, tuition, other, in the amount of $40,000?
Motion, second.
So, this is our adult education, it's a mandated program, and this is based on need, right?
Yeah, based on need, and Lori Ryback, you know, comes and meets with me every month, giving me updates on how things are going, and our mandated programs this year are at the highest level we've ever had, so she, in our ESL, in our citizenship, I think when the board gets her report at the end of the year, you're going to see record enrollment in all of Lori's mandated programs, GED programs, so.
Any questions for Kathy or Vince on page 62? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 62, tuition, other, in the amount of $40,000, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 63, travel in the amount of $86,710?
Motion, second.
So, these are travel stipends for administrators and teachers per contract, so this is contract-driven. I think we also just were underfunding this a bit, so we've made an adjustment there when it comes to that part of the amount that's here. It also provides for conferences and DLC training and professional development.
Okay, any questions for Kathy on page 63? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 63, travel in the amount of $86,710, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 64, natural gas in the amount of $237,288?
Motion, second.
Did you want to say anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I spent a lot of time this past fall studying natural gas when we were doing our bidding for our electricity contract, because electricity generation is so affected by natural gas costs, because so much electricity generation in the Northeast is being generated by these plants that are burning natural gas, and there were ups and downs. Electricity is trending a little bit higher, as I've discussed with the board, with our renewal that came up, but natural gas itself now is, is not as, not as bad, so I've kept this pretty conservative right now, you know, and I'm watching how the, just how our, our natural gas bills are coming in, but I think we're, we're trending pretty good. The electricity side, I'm much more pleased with, because we've transitioned over at IAR more to electricity with that heating system, and yet, the energy efficiency things that Matt Ross and Tim Harris have put in place, and the town have put in place because of our lighting, is helping offset anything about increases in electricity.
Any questions for Vince on page 64? All right, the motion to tentatively approve page 64, natural gas in the amount of $237,288, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 65, electricity in the amount of $1,039,408?
Motion, second.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know what else to add about electricity, you know, we went to NG.
We need it.
Our new, yeah, we went, we went to the new, our new provider is NG, and we have gone from Blue Rock to NG, that occurred in the month of December, so I, I'm, myself, Katie in the central office, Ann Beth, we spend a lot of time looking at every month's electricity invoices, it's a big cost to the board, and I, again, I'm pleased with how, even though our, our rate went up just a little bit with this new contract, because of the energy savings that we put in place, it's not as bad. So, so this is the projection that I have for electricity for, for the board, and I'll keep monitoring it.
All right, any questions for Vince on page 65? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 65, electricity in the amount of $1,039,408, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 68, instructional supplies in the amount of $475,209?
Motion, second.
So, this is to provide instructional supplies, and we have a slight decrease in this area, it was one of the areas where we, you know, did make some reduction.
Any questions for Kathy on, on page 68? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 68, instructional supplies in the amount of $475,209, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 69, student activity athletic supplies in the amount of $280,348?
Motion, second.
So, you can see, this is, this includes a lot of different areas, including pool and ice rental, and I think that's the driver of that slight increase, is just what, you know, we're anticipating for that rental, and that last sentence is really for bill. The account also provides for student planner. We could go way back with that one.
I still know, I just never, I never said that I don't like student planner, I just felt there was another way we could pay for it.
It was a big discussion once, just once.
Long time ago.
Very long.
Want to share, share with us, Bill.
No, you're moving along, I don't, I'd be happy to talk to anybody off-line.
Have a little fun while we're going through the budget.
Break it up a little. But I had argued years ago that we thought, I thought there was an opportunity to reduce costs by having them paid for by, or sponsored by local businesses, but that didn't get anywhere. It didn't make sense, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, okay.
I believe, I believe I made a comment on the other side of the table about not wanting the planners.
That's right.
I was out there, we didn't need the planner.
But I learned, I learned after having kids go through Westwoods and IAR, they are absolutely critical.
Yes, I think my daughter would die without her planner, so I'm now on the, I'm on the planner bandwagon.
I was going to say, you changed on this, on this table.
Hundred percent critical. I appreciate you putting a little footnote.
Thank you for the planner.
Subject question comes up, so.
Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 69, student activity athletic supplies in the amount of $280,348, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 70, office supplies in the amount of $76,426?
Motion, second.
So, this is office supplies, and, you know, it just reflects zero-based budgeting.
Okay, questions now? The motion to tentatively approve page 70, office supplies in the amount of $76,426, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 71, library supplies in the amount of $16,512?
Motion, second.
So, there is a slight increase here, and it is because of enhanced educational programming at the elementary level, so now students do get library on a very consistent basis, and that ha, you know, that leads to needing some more supplies for that, but, you know, we were able to, without increasing, you know, the budget, we were able to increase the quality of programming for our elementary students, so just very positive.
Okay, any questions? The motion to tentatively approve page 71, library supplies in the amount of $16,512, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 72, testing materials in the amount of $47,337?
Motion, second.
Just, again, zero-based budgeting, we do budget for college work readiness assessment, but this really reflects all, you know, all of our testing needs in the district.
Any questions for Kathy on page 72? Okay, the, the motion to tentatively approve page 72, testing materials in the amount of $47,337, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 73, health supplies in the amount of $19,690?
Motion, second.
So, this increase has to do with a policy that the board just approved, which requires additional supplies, and that was the Narcan that we just approved, and a policy effective July 1, 2019.
Which will be managed at the, the central office by the, by the Sue Beersley, our supervisor in nursing.
Okay, any questions? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve page 73, health supplies in the amount of $19,690, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, absentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 74, audiovisual computer supplies in the amount of $119,125?
Motion, second. Motion? Second.
Okay, so are we here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Audiovisual.
74.
I was reading through it. So this is a very, I don't think the name really reflects what's in this particular account, but it's a very important account, having to do with like our firewall and security measures when it comes to the use of computers in our, our school district. So the increase that you see is mainly due to costs that are associated with gaggle and that is a, you know, a program that we use that really connects to our students' use. And if there's any types of things that we see that are concerning, gaggle notifies us. And then the firewall upgrade, which is essential for us, you know, for safety and, and security.
Okay, any questions? Page 74? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve, page 74, audiovisual computer supplies in the amount of $119,125, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively, tentatively approve, page 75, custodial supplies in the amount of $127,062?
Motion? Second.
So custodial supplies is a reflection of, you know, just, this is what they need, zero-based budgeting, and so that increase is just, reflects that need.
Okay, any questions? Oh, Chrissy, you have one?
No.
I was gonna say, I'm impressed.
What do they need?
And, and, you know, our schools are open and available and, you know, so it's, it's a lot of use. I think it mentions here over 2,000 hours of after-school use by the community each year, so it also covers those costs.
As a cost of living adjustment, that's about it.
The motion to tentatively approve, page 75, custodial supplies in the amount of $127,062, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve, page 76, gasoline in the amount of $158,659?
Motion? Second.
So this is an account, we talked a little bit about this when it was transportation line. So it looks, you know, it looks like a decrease, but there, you know, it's because we've taken $85,000 in, from another account and placed it into this account. There's actually, in the contract, we are paying an additional 50 cents per gallon of fuel. So, you know, there's that additional $85,000 placed in here and, right? Oh, sorry.
Yep, you're, you're right, but it's the $85,000 out of this account in transportation.
That's right.
Yep.
Okay.
And then the, so that would have reduced this significantly.
Yeah.
But then, because of the contract, we've adjusted how much the board is paying for fuel and that is a, a little bit more of a cost there. So it's not, it still comes out to be a reduction in this area, but not as much.
Yes.
Yep.
But we are paying more. That's right.
Right, we're paying, yep. Because of this new contract, the board is paying more towards the cost of fuel for the buses.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, any questions? Page 76? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve, page 76, gasoline in the amount of $158,659, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve, page 77, textbooks in the amount of $225,085?
Motion? Second.
So the main increase is due to textbooks for AP chemistry in this particular.
And I guess, Kathy, maybe you can talk, or Kim, can you talk a little bit about tech versus textbooks and where are we in the, I mean, we're buying hard books for, is this, this is a textbook, we're not using tech books?
Yeah, some, some tech.
You know, just give you some, how we're doing that.
Yeah, so Kim, why don't you provide?
We're kind of at the phase now where textbook companies will throw in the hardcover textbook for free because the costs really pay for the online resources, the annual updating of information. So it, it allows us to always have the most current information and in the field of sciences, that's incredibly important. So this particular textbook does have online, an online support set of resources as well, so.
I guess in the classroom, are they, were they, they still using this AP textbook in class?
They do. And in fact, the AP course recommends that there be a textbook available to students, so we do have copies of it. You wouldn't typically see students bring their big, heavy AP chemistry textbook back and forth every day in their backpack, but they do use the, the book in class and then those supplemental online materials and access to those materials at home as well.
And there is an audit of AP courses and they will be looking for a textbook as part of the.
This is also the account, Kathy, where the online resources for our Math in Focus curriculum.
Oh, yeah, that's another driver of that.
Yes, because we've been using Math in Focus K8 and when we first signed on and, and, you know, made the transition to that program for our math curriculum, they were so happy that we were doing that as a leader in the state, that we were able to use their digital resources, the full suite of digital resources for free for the past six years, but now they're asking us to begin paying for them. So that's another part of this increase as well. And teachers use those resources all the time. Students access them. It allows, you know, those levels of challenge and support for students to really personalize where they are in the, in the learning sequence. So they're very important to us.
Ellen, did you have something?
No.
Oh, I thought you did, okay. All right, well, thank you, Kim, and thank you for making me feel old now that they're throwing textbooks in for free.
Yeah, right.
Any other questions on page 77? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve, page 77, textbooks in the amount of $225,085, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve, page 78, library books in the amount of $78,000?
Motion? Second.
So, you know, just purchasing and what, you know, principals and teachers had put forward, our, our library media specialists have put forward.
Any questions on page 78? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve, page 78, library books in the amount of $78,000, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve, page 79, library subscriptions in the amount of $41,475?
Motion? Second.
So the increase is due to regular licensing increases to the web-based search and database resources that we had acquired in 2017, 18. So you can see some examples in there.
Any questions on page 79 for Kathy? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve, page 79, library subscriptions in the amount of $41,475, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve, page 80, professional subscriptions in the amount of $7,656?
Motion? Second.
There's a slight decrease here and it's just, you know, zero-based budgeting.
Yep. All right, any questions? The motion to tentatively approve, page 80, professional subscriptions in the amount of $7,656, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve, page 81, technology-related supplies in the amount of $190,280?
Motion? Second.
I actually mentioned this in my presentation and, you know, there's a, a decrease in this account and it's just about, you know, efficiency at the district level, really looking at that network topology, server hardware consolidation and reduction in licensing. So great work on the part of Matt.
Any questions on page 81? Okay, thank you again, Matt, for all your efforts. The motion to tentatively approve, page 81, technology-related supplies in the amount of $190,280, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve, page 82, replacement of equipment in the amount of $315,025?
Motion? Second.
So each year, sometimes you see an increase in replacement because that's where we are. We're replacing, you know, technology and other times you see increases in like new equipment. So there is a decrease this year and it's just, you know, part of our technology plan and, you know, Matt could answer any questions, anyone. And I think there, all of this is listed on the subsequent pages detail.
Any questions? Chrissy?
There's a lot of Chromebooks being purchased, like a lot.
So, the, the driver in both replacement and new is Chromebooks and really it comes down to whether or not devices exist or don't exist as to which category they fall into, replacement or new. So this year, there's a slight decrease in replacement because of the cost of the devices going down slightly, but there is an increase in new equipment because we are looking to continue with our initiative of providing teacher Chromebooks in association with the proposed one-to-one program that's coming up. So because those devices do not currently exist, I categorize them in new equipment rather than replacement. But yes, there are a lot of Chromebooks.
I mean, $267,000 worth of Chromebooks.
Correct, which is actually down from what we've been spending on, on Chromebooks year after year, but we've actually increased the number of Chromebooks that we're looking to purchase as well.
And that's just replacing?
That is replacing.
Things that affect the get.
Correct, correct. Right now, we're looking, the Chromebook manufacturers are kind of tricking the system and you're, you know, we're getting five, some of our Chromebooks are even older, but five years out of a Chromebook. Most of the devices are produced with an expected life of three to four years and the way the licensing and updates is working, we're seeing them drop off. The manufacturers won't support updates and neither will Google after five years. So, you know, we're, we've been keeping up with our 700. There's a, a little bit of a bump to add some, or to do some additional replacement here at the high school this upcoming year, but then you'll see there is an increase in new equipment and that's because we're also looking to put some teacher Chromebooks into the mix.
So Matt, the replacement Chromebooks that we're talking about here is to keep things status quo as is.
It's part of our regular replacement cycle, but I am strategically targeting as part of the proposed upcoming take-home program that those replacement devices will go into grades five and grade eight, which sets us up in terms of where those newer devices are falling in terms of getting that rollout going should we move forward with it. So the, last year, we purchased Chromebooks for grades five and six. Those devices will then move up with the students as they go to the next grade level for the upcoming fall and will, again, will backfill, will put new devices in grade five and new devices in grade eight because those will then fall right into the mix in terms of age. Where I, you know, we're still looking at a four-year, student being issued a Chromebook for four years. We want to make sure that they're not starting out with a three, three-year Chromebook when that happens.
What's the pricing history on these again? I know you said it, you know, the, the cost of a Chromebook, it's, it's been going.
It's been going down. We are seeing a little bit of a stabilization. We're also, I'm also watching, we've, a couple of drivers this year are customs and tariffs because they're all produced overseas. And the other is that the processor manufacturers have had some serious issues. Intel, most of the Chromebook manufacturers and your regular computer manufacturers have abandoned Intel this year due to production issues. The, one of our vendors told us that Intel has actually converted three cafeterias at their production facilities into production facilities to put, put things together. But overall, over the past 10 year, or eight years, we started out with Chromebooks coming in around the $300 range. There was an additional licensing fee to manage those. We saw it drop significantly about two years after the introduction of the Chromebook to the market. Right now, we still go with Chromebooks that we know can, can stand up to kids' use for three to four years and those are falling in the 225 range. Sometimes we can get a little bit more of a discount based on volume, sometimes not. And we're seeing consumer-grade devices that are really your two-year, you know, two-year device below $100. You know, there are some one-off manufacturers that are putting them out there. You can go to Walmart, go to Best Buy and get one for just under $100. The issues we've seen with those are, are damage and repair. They're just not built to, for the type of use that we're using them for. But the devices are, the, the overall cost is coming down over time.
Would there, I don't know, Vince, that collaborative we have, is there a purchasing efficiency built in with that collaborative that we get the benefit on the copying and printing and?
We've tried that, actually, informally in the past, we've tried that with, with neighboring districts. And it's, while we have been able to negotiate discounts on overall volume, the issues we saw were, there's not much of a margin on the Chromebook from the manufacturer's standpoint. So, you know, once you get above 100 devices, it's pretty much, they've leveled out in terms of, it doesn't matter how many you're buying at that point. We've also, we've looked at, working with partnering districts, just in terms of logistics. So delivery, storage. This year, I'm looking to work with a local partner up in Bloomfield that works with one of our vendors, Space Fitters. One of our biggest issues is where do we put everything once it gets here? Because there's some prep time that's also involved. We have summer programs going and so I'm looking to work with them to temporarily house some of this inventory for us and they'll do some of the prep work, rather than us doing the prep work here on site. And we've had a vendor who's come and assisted us with that over the summer. They'll do it at their facility instead. And, but we do, the tech directors in the area, we all talk on a regular basis. Everybody compares notes, is, okay, what, what are you going with this year and, and what are you getting for a price on it? It's just that there's no margin on these devices.
Thank you, Matt. Any additional questions for Matt?
Okay, the motion to tentatively approve, page 82, replacement of equipment in the amount of $315,025, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve, page 91, new equipment other in the amount of $83,525?
Motion?
Matt already just talked about it.
Yep, so I assume we have no additional questions on that. So the motion to tentatively approve, page 91, new equipment other in the amount of $83,525, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve, page 100, insurance other than employee benefits in the amount of $177,798?
Motion? Second.
So you can see all the areas that this provides insurance coverage for. And I don't know, Vince, if you have anything to add?
No, no, you know, we do, Joe Swack, he just, at last year, gotten a very good renewal. So we're still benefiting from that. And so I get guidance from him on some of these insurances and what to expect. So, no.
Okay. Any questions for Vince or Kathy on page 100? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve, page 100, insurance other than employee benefits in the amount of $177,798, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Can I have a motion to tentatively approve, page 101, memberships in the amount of $50,867?
Motion? Second.
So this provides professional memberships for administrators and principals, things like being part of CAPS or CAS. Those are just some examples of, you know, where, you know, what memberships we have.
Okay. Any questions on page 101? Okay, the motion to tentatively approve, page 101, memberships in the amount of $50,867, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? And, drumroll, please?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for getting through this with great speed, but can I have a motion to tentatively approve, page 102, grand total of the Farmington Board of Education budget in the amount of $67,785,605?
Motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Recommended budget is approved. Oh, you want to, you want to take a short recess?
Tentatively.
Tentatively, tentatively, yes. Take a short recess and?
It's, it's up to you.
We gotta go to, you want to go right into session?
We could go, but I don't think lunch is here.
It's not here yet, so. But I, I'm thinking, Bill, do you want to, because you're.
I got a few minutes before.
You got a few minutes, so do you want to?
Okay. We could go into executive session.
Yeah, why don't we do that, because I know you have to leave. So can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, we're in executive. We're back in session. You know, at this point, I'm looking at our agenda, remaining budget review by board. We've been very speedy and we have no budget review. The budget, recommended budget has been tentatively approved for consideration on Monday. Monday. Then, you know, at this point in time, historically, I, I go over a review of information requested for the next meeting. I'll kind of open it up if anyone wants to supplement anything, but, you know, just my notes as I was jotting down through the process. Mark had, you know, breakdown on claim trends with some information from Cigna. So, you know, we can, if that can be, you know, so that was it. And then I just, you know, Ellen, I, we were just mentioning, you know, you had some issues that, when we were talking about the high school, but there, if you want to build on that or anything, I didn't even know, I just jotted it down because I didn't have much. But if you wanted anything, I'll let you, you know, respond to that. If there's something in particular you're looking for, but I didn't really have much.
It was more of a curiosity if it's coming up in conversation because I consider it a safety issue. The administration does not feel it has to come forward at this time. It's nothing I would hold up.
Yeah, no, I just...
I don't need any more information.
Okay.
We're gonna look into like a temporary, you know, short-term...
It'll be raised with Tim Harrison discussed.
Yeah, so, so I really didn't have a lot of takeaways. You know, we're going through the process. People had any particular, any board members had any particular questions for Kathy, Vince, or the administrators to come back with much. But yeah, at the risk of, you know, missing anything, I will open it up at this point in time if anybody would like to, you know, present a, a, a topic or a question for further follow-up or detail from Kathy or the administrators. I'll open it up at this point in time.
Is there any way to get a cost on the new proposed specialists who are being asked for with the, we have the ELL teacher, we've got the special services, we've got 3.5 positions being added for BCBA care and 3.5. If we could get a total cost on what those would be, that would be helpful. I think also what the cost differential is on the Chromebook implementation going one-to-one. Because we have a replacement cost, I wasn't really clear on what the difference would be moving that program forward to full one-to-one for the falls.
So Matt could answer that now.
And I think, I think we actually, Amy could actually answer the cost of those positions now too. For each position, we could talk through each of those positions and tell you what the projected average salary would be for those positions.
Okay.
So.
So our Chromebook replacement plan has called for approximately 700 devices replaced each year. We typically, we have targeted areas that we go to. Again, due to the fact that the devices themselves have come down in cost, we're looking, moving forward in terms of the overall, if we were to move to a one-to-one, our annual required purchasing would be in the, of numbers of Chromebooks would be in the neighborhood of 800 Chromebooks a year. So because those costs have come down, we're essentially looking at a wash. So the, the annual increase dollar-wise ends up being a wash even though we are looking at the potential of purchasing more Chromebooks year after year to support a take-home one-to-one.
So no cost increase is what you're saying? Just no?
No cost increase when you look at it in terms of the, the number. And that's, it's kind of reflected this year as well in terms of the, the reduction in the replacement line. You know, we're still purchasing 700 Chromebooks this year, but the dollar figure itself is down from what it was last year. And the, the same is true in terms of we've had to budget not only for Chromebooks as we go through replacements, but we've also budgeted historically for carts. And we're, will no longer be looking at the expense of the carts either. So we've got a little bit of, of play. And that, that's part of why, what I've been watching. And this question had come up in previous years, well, why aren't we doing a take-home? And we really couldn't cost justify it without a significant increase. But because things have fallen into line, we are looking at the ability to do this with, with no cost increase to the district in terms of those Chromebook purchases.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Amy, I, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you have the information, please.
She has the information.
We generally...
Do you want to come up there? Just, you, so everybody can hear you. Scott.
When we budget for new positions, we always use the average teacher salary of $60,637. However, for the BCBA position, which tends to be a more specialized position, we do budget slightly higher at approximately $80,000, which is the going rate across, you know, the dist, different districts.
Thank you, Amy. Go ahead, Chrissy.
But the BCBA position and the other, the care team member, the details of those two positions are in here?
Lori did speak to them in her special services presentation, yes.
And the care team member, Amy, would be budgeted at?
At $60,637.
But there's also, you know, some, some measure of offset for the BCBA position because of reduction in our contract with CCSN.
So we already have BCBA services currently. I believe it's like three days a week and this would be five days a week and, but we're going to reduce CCS, it already was reduced in the budget, CCSN. So there is an offset that already, we've reduced the budget for CCSN and we've increased this, the teacher line.
Good?
Yes.
Nope, I just said that.
I was just gonna say, actually, as far as, I think that's everything I had, but I mean, it, also, I just wanted to, you know, obviously point out that this is above the town council's range that they've set out for us to go to, which was two to 2.5 in terms of that range. So, you know, obviously, we're gonna have to consider, you know, what they've requested. And, you know, I just want to make sure we're aware, like if you, has there been a, any type of looking as consideration as, from your side, if you've looked at, you know, where adjustments could be made? I don't say you have, but obviously, it's gonna be a discussion for Monday night. And if there's any other questions, can we send them in between now and then?
Sure, yeah.
Can I ask a question first?
Yeah.
From Mark's comment. Because Mark, you, you brought it up, the target from the council. As a board member, and maybe Chris can speak to this, maybe Kathy can, as a board member, I understand that the council set the targets. I have received no, and maybe someone else has, I've received no notification of it, no, no official notice that we had been given a target or the superintendent had been given a target and not even an email notification. So the board, I believe, has gotten no, and maybe, Chris, you can speak to this. We've gotten no...
I'm aware of it, but don't, no, I agree.
Yeah. So where does that put us then, discussing the target?
Well, I, I think we...
We're just supposed to know it happened and so we've received no notification.
I, I think, yeah, I mean, I think it just, I, I think we, we take our budget process presented to us by Kathy and we review the recommended budget as presented to us at this stage and that's...
Because I will not address the target or consider it. I never have, I never will, especially this year, we have been given no notice of it.
Yep, Liz?
Well, I just, I'm gonna just address it because Mark addressed it, but the, the target, as far as I'm aware, is something that the town council does. They actually, this year, said that it was just a guideline and that it was fluid and it was a starting point. As the Board of Education, I believe it's our job to address the budget process in our own way and not, we, we're not to take into account a target that is put in process by the town council. So I think it's our job to do, to look at Kathy's presented budget. She's already made reductions. She's presented us with perhaps the leanest budget I have ever seen in my 10 years of following the Farmington Board of Education's budget. As far as I could tell, and my question to Kathy is, of the 3.02%, it looks like overwhelming, like 95% of it is contractual in nature. It's either transportation costs, it's contractual costs, it's, it's, it looks like it's all contractual. So it looks like any reduction to this budget would impact programming. I, I can't imagine that you could reduce this budget. I'm not asking you to reduce the budget. I would never imagine asking you as a Board of Education member to reduce the budget before the town council reduces the budget. But I think you did a great job. I would never envision that, asking you to reduce it. But if you were to, it looks like it would impact programming because it looks like it's all contractual. The, of the, of the 3.02% is all contractual or required in some way. You did an excellent zero-based budgeting and I don't think we're beholden to the town council in any way to, that is not the process that we have.
And, you know, just, I, I think if we, as a board, I would think we all take our responsibilities as board members relative to the budget in terms of approving a, a program of learning and teaching. But I don't think any of us, I don't want to speak for everybody, checks our, our desire to run a fiscally responsible board at the door. So I think we take a holistic view of this budget process with that, I, I can speak on behalf of, hopefully, everybody here that that is part of our charge, you know, and I think that's part of this process. So wherever it falls within the bigger processes goes to town council. I know when I come in here every week, you know, I want to run this board financially responsible. It's, it's our charge. I want to run it financially responsible in connection, in conjunction with what Kathy proposes to us. So I don't look at these as mutually exclusive, like, you know, we're, we're, we're checking, you know, we're spending like drunken sailors here and, and, you know, but we can all have different views and opinions on it. But I think we, I speak on behalf of everybody here that we all approach that and take that charge very seriously. So wherever this, we approved our recommended budget and, or tentatively approved it and, you know, we'll, we'll see where it goes.
Right. I agree.
And just to clarify...
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Until we approve it at this point, it's the administration's budget and then we adopt it after our vote. So right now, we're working between...
Yeah, yeah.
The administration and the council's recommendations. So we are to take both into consideration, in my opinion. And maybe other people might differ, but, you know, we're beholden to the schools and the taxpayers, so we need to find a happy middle before we adopt it. It's our budget.
And, and we will review the tentatively approved, recommended budget on Monday.
Just from, you know, my perspective and, and everyone within the organization, you know, my responsibility is to the students of Farmington. And so I bring forward a budget based on the needs of our students. And I've always, you know, been directed by the board that, you know, that's what's expected. And so targets, you know, sometimes I, our budget falls within a target, it's just, it just happens that way. You know, it's not because I keep that in mind. I really do keep in mind the needs of our students and also being fiscally responsible. So I, you know, this idea of a balance of excellence and that's who we are as a school district and fiscal responsibility is, is how I approach it. So if I'm bringing something above that level, it's because of the needs of our students. It's, you know, I, I, I don't think any of you would want me to arbitrarily come in knowing that maybe I'm sacrificing, you know, the quality of the education in Farmington to bring forward something that would be at a lower level. So I've just always, you know, from the board, you know, the understanding and as board members, you're agents of the state, you know, that your main focus and my main focus are, would be on the, the students of Farmington and what their needs are.
Okay. Any additional comments or, so any additional needs or requests for Kathy, Vince, or the administration for Monday night?
Not at this time.
Not at this point, okay.
So is, is there other questions coming back? Can you just refresh my...
Yeah, you want to just, what you, what do you have?
You only, um, let's see, so I think, I'm gonna say the breakdown in health trends, I'm not sure if we could ever have that for Monday. And there are some, like HIPAA, like we would have to really check to see what can be released as a self-insured district and what we can't release. So that is probably a longer-term question that I need to, to look at and, and, yeah.
At a, a board meeting, we could ask for Steve Scholl to come and talk about, from his perspective, in a general perspective. After the Cigna review in March, I could also, um, talk, but as Kathy said, some of it is drilled down, very drilled down and is, is private information in some cases.
Yes, yes. And anytime it could, in any way be identifiable, we cannot, you know, share that.
So...
So anything else? Is there anything coming back to the board? Any, any questions for Monday?
So Mark, yours, special, you got your costs on...
His special letters, his salary. Cost differential on the Chromebook.
I think if any other questions in the meantime, you know...
You can communicate, communicate directly. So at this point in time, I would say you have no outstanding charges for Monday, subject to additional communication from board members in the next 48 hours or so.
Okay.
Okay. And then we will also obviously field public comment if the public wants to come Monday night and comment. So that's, anything else for Kathy for Monday night? Okay, well, there being none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.